Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Mount Vernon City School District Regular Meeting, October 15th, 2024. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Trustee McDonough.
Present.
Trustee Maribel. Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Middleton. Trustee Engenga. Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Kerwin.
Here.
VP Kelly.
Here.
And President Saunders. We have our quorum, our student trustee, De Grand Prix.
There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at the meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff member at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Madison Holmes.
Madison Holmes. Ms. Ward.
My name is Quishet Kouchi-Ward, and this is Bianca Ward. And we reside at 258 East Prospect Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, 10550. We are, Bianca is a student at, what's the name of your school? Okay, and I am a SEPTA PTA member. In front of you, I have given everyone a worksheet that is similar to the homework that Bianca had received. I would like to give everyone up to two minutes to solve the problem, since I'm only up here for three. You may begin. While you work on those problems that we gave you, Bianca, would you please read number nine?
In problem six, how did you ask your first ASR to find your second ASR?
All right. So Bianca's doing her very best to try to read. For those of you who know or do not know, my daughter is an ICT student. She does have an IEP, which I am okay with expressing here tonight. She has a foundation in the ABECA curriculum from when she went to a mail transmission, also known as ECM. That is why she is able to read to a certain extent. Bianca still struggles with different phonological words due to her disability, which I had mentioned before at other board meetings. She was a victim of, due to the CEO exposure. I am here tonight to address this homework that I brought to the schools level, all the way up to coming to the Board of Ed and speaking with the Director of Pupil Personnel. I asked the principal at Bianca's school, I asked the Director of Pupil Personnel, along with maybe two other secretaries here, if they could answer number nine for me. Not one person could answer number nine for me. I'm here to speak for parents who are not able to speak for themselves, who are not able to speak for their students, whether they be Gen Ed, ICT, or SPED. This form of mathematics, I feel, is not going to help our students with getting the basic, the basic form of computing that they need to focus on. This is not going to help with retention, in my opinion, in mathematics. For this to come home the way it did, and I'm just gonna hold this paper up just to show you how it came home, there are no explanations here. There's no explanations, there's no examples. It came home just like this, and I, being a former second grade teacher, and a former second grade assistant teacher who assisted with teaching these different derivative forms of subtracting, could not even help my child. So I can't imagine the mailmen, or the cashiers, or even the attorneys. And you know what? What really threw me off was about four years ago, we laughed and we made jokes about the parents who were struggling at home with their children, who said, dear teachers, please send home the answer key, due to COVID, and them having to step up and do a little bit more at home. And this is probably what they were referring to. If I, a former educator, could not even help my own special needs child with just remembering and recalling the basic directions for this, how could we other parents? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Marlon Molina. I work for the City of Mount Vernon, the Department of Planning and Community Development at 1 Roosevelt North, Mount Vernon, New York, 10550. And I'm here to speak about the city's comprehensive plan. I don't know if you've heard, but we have been conducting community engagement meetings throughout the city for about a little over 16 months. We've been doing community engagement at the neighborhood level, and our goal is to engage every parent so that the comprehensive plan reflects the vision and the wishes and the needs of all members. I'm here today before the Mount Vernon School Board to ask for your cooperation. You know, phase two of the plan is focusing on all of the neighborhoods. You know, that includes industrial areas, it includes retail areas. But more importantly, we want to make sure that we engage our diverse community, and we look to the Mount Vernon School District to be able to give an opportunity to parents to come out to meetings and, you know, share their concerns about education, infrastructure, safety around, you know, street safety, open space. These are all the issues that we are having conversations about with the community. We've hired a consultant who is taking all of the input from the community, they're synthesizing it, they're creating themes so that this can be put into a comprehensive plan. Just a little background, you know, the last time the City of Mount Vernon updated the comprehensive plan was in 1968. There's been attempts to, you know, update the plan. This is now, as I said before, our 14th month, and we completed phase one, which focused in the downtown area. There's a report that was created, the Downtown Vision Report. You can see it online at envisionmountvernon.com. And phase two, as I said before, is gonna focus in the neighborhoods. And, you know, what we've heard so far is that the neighborhoods is concerned with preservation. So when you think about development, you also have to think about, you know, preserving green space, open space, historical sites. And, you know, Mount Vernon is in need of economic stimulation. So we also have to think about, you know, modern planning principles, you know. And in order to update a plan that hasn't been updated since 1968, I guess that's like 55, 56 years ago, you need to hire experts who can tell us, who can tell us, you know, this is what some other communities have done. And although Mount Vernon is unique and is different, we need to make sure that we take a look at what, you know, best practices from around the country, and that's what this is about. So tonight, I'm here to request to see if the school board would support hosting a couple of city-wide meetings. And the school facilities are important because the residents know it. You have the ability to contact parents. I can provide more details via email. I just dropped something. I can provide more details via email, but mainly, we're here today to request collaboration to see if the school district will host a couple of these city-wide meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mom.
Thank you.
Mamadou Diallo.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Mamadou Diallo. I live on 716 South Sixth Avenue. My question is related to teachers at Daniel Washington School of Art. My daughter is in special school there. She has no math teacher. It's been two months now. That's terrible to me. So I need to know what you're gonna do about it.
Thank you, Mamadou Diallo.
Cynthia Crinshaw. What I want to discuss is to continue to tell a story or something that is untrue is like a snowball rolling down a hill. I'm referring to the $10,000-plus raise. The first story was the board voted on the raise. The second story was the person deserved the raise. The third story was the person saved the district thousands of dollars. If the third reason was true, you would have said that straight out the gate. So a lot of people just don't believe that. However, if the person saved thousands of dollars, did the board give it back to the person as a raise? And was this a wash? Wasn't this person hired to help the district? How and where did he save us thousands of dollars? What budget line will we see the dollar amount on? It sounds like a wash. Per your answer, he saved money and in return, received the money back. Should I assume at the next meeting you will explain how and where the money was saved? Another thing is the state pays the food vendor $350,000 to $400,000 a month. If it was up to this board to set a fee on our children, why not put the fee as low as possible? Maybe 50 to 75 cents for the children, and the teachers, maybe $2.50. They haven't had a raise in two years. Why should the vendor make more money off the back of our Title I students? Can we see the amount of money each month they make? What's the status, what's the status of credit recovery? There's approximately 45 students anticipating graduating in January 2025. They are falling behind due to no C R staff, and that is the primary reason for them attending Rebecca Turner. This program has been in existence for years. Please continue to keep this program present. And what is the status of the charter schools? I know we brought in petitions and everything. Did they get what they want? Did we get what we want? Did they get more students? Did they get more students? And the last thing, thanks, Dr. Smith, for joining the PTA, and looking forward to the trustee joining also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crinshaw.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erica Peterson. I live here in Mount Vernon, New York. First, as the president of Mount Vernon High School's PTA, I would like to give a huge shout-out to our high school and all the amazing things that are happening there, especially in our CTE department. That last meeting was absolutely tremendous and amazing with Dr. Peterson, her team, and Mr. Simmons, what they're doing there. Last week, the Mount Vernon Council of PTAs had a first general meeting of the school year. Once again, thank you so much to trustee Middleton, who was the only trustee to make it to that meeting, and for Dr. Doggett filling in for Dr. Smith, who attended. You two were awesome, and your presence was, as you could tell by the communication and interaction from the crowd, much appreciated. Some concerns arose from that meeting, which I would like to address and would like follow-up on. Several attendees mentioned hearing from their respective school's parents about the lack of accessibility in being able to view board meetings like tonight's, now that's being streamed through the district website. If Dr. Smith and the board, if you could please send out another notice to our district's families, letting them know how to access the meetings, that would be much appreciated. Another concern that came up was that a member said that when someone have called or emailed the district clerk to speak at a meeting during public comments, they immediately receive a call from her acting superintendent to dissuade them from coming to a meeting to speak, and instead are told that she will handle their concern. This voice silencing tactic must be addressed because we already have way too many parents who feel like their voices are not heard, and for the ones who do want to speak up, to be suppressed like that is unacceptable. Can this type of action please be stopped? A few minutes ago, there was a presentation about how digitalized the district has become, which completely is confusing me, because in the budget, there's around $424,000 increase for textbooks. Yet, when you go to the school buildings, you can find boxes and boxes of unused extra textbooks piled up in classrooms, hallways, the libraries, and they're like, they're piled up. And you see outside, unused books, extra books. If there is, Dr. Smith, are we able to return those extra textbooks and receive either a refund or credit towards future purchases? Because the presentation given and these budget lines are totally counterintuitive. According to the Merriam-Webster Dictionary, "The definition of fraud is an act of deceiving or misrepresenting or a person who is not what he or she pretends to be." This includes signatures. When a criminal act like this is done, and people sit and allow it, it is called being criminally complicit. That, too, is a crime. I hope this will be addressed because it is unacceptable. Closing out, I would like to wish you all a happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, even though it's, it was yesterday. There are historically documented cases of Christopher Columbus dismembering, torturing, and raping Indigenous people. When a slave Native people resisted, he removed their body parts so they could bleed out. Documentation of him committing mass genocide and publicly executing Indigenous people. Please remember that you chose to strip an entire school building in this district of his name, yet you will continue to keep this tyrannical monster's name on our school calendars, full of, with buildings full of Black, Brown, and Bayeed children. This makes no sense.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, and that ends public comment. We're gonna go on to reports of the superintendent.
Good evening, Mount Vernon. The district is encouraging voter registration. The last day to register to vote in New York is October 26, 2024. Thank you goes to Cynthia Crinshaw of the Mount Vernon NAACP for their voter registration efforts at our high school. Everyone, please vote. As many of you are aware, the Board of Education and the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers have been engaged in negotiations for a successful labor agreement since the spring of 2023. After approximately 19 bargaining sessions, some of which were over four hours in duration, the parties mutually agreed to file a joint declaration of impasse with the New York State Public Employment Relations Board. The parties took this action due to our inability to reach an agreement through the process of negotiation. The Public Employment Relations Act provides various steps to assist school districts and their teacher unions in reaching an amicable settlement. This includes the appointment of a neutral professional mediator mutually selected by the parties, who is in charge with assisting the parties in reaching our mutual goal, a fair and equitable settlement for all involved. Although the current agreement between the parties expired on June 30 of 2022, it is important to note that the district has a legal obligation to continue to honor the terms and provisions of the contract until a new agreement is reached. The foregoing includes grant and step movement based upon years of service and lane changes based upon the completion of graduate course credits within the existing salary schedule, which have resulted and will continue to result in annual automatic base salary increases for certain staff members beyond the date of expiration of the contract. The Board wishes to reiterate and make clear how much we value and respect the hard work performed by members of the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers each and every day. We look forward to engaging in the mediation process and are confident that with the assistance of the mediator, we will ultimately reach a settlement that is fair and equitable for our valued staff and fiscally responsible for our community members. So, October National Bully Prevention Month. The Mount Vernon City School District continues its commitment to deter violence in school, online and in the community. We want to encourage students, parents, and staff to participate in raising awareness about the harmful effects of bullying and how together we can support prevention, intervention, and reduce incidents. So tomorrow, October 16, 2024, is Unity Day. We are asking staff, students, and families to wear an orange shirt on this day to send a visible message that no child or adult should ever experience bullying. If a child or someone you know is being bullied, please contact his or her school immediately. You can also contact your school's Dignity for All Students Act coordinator, which is listed on our district website. Let's work together to create a safe and welcoming community that promotes positive learning, respect, and inclusion. In regards to our K-8 building configuration survey, the Mount Vernon City School District thanks the community for their participation in its two K-8 building configuration surveys released in January and February 2024. The district has heard your input and has established a committee to implement a transition from its current K-8 building configurations to a more age-appropriate and cost-effective model. Seventy-three percent of the respondents supported a change in the building configuration in our first survey, and 59% supported a change in the second survey. The third survey has been emailed to all emails and posted to our website. Please answer the survey questions. So tonight's presentations. Firstly, we will have Maxine Cole Wilshire. She's our district-wide substance abuse provider, and she will discuss healthy mind and body. She will be followed by Arthur Mohammed, the youth development specialist on My Brothers'
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So as Dr. Smith said, thank you so much, Dr. Smith, for the invitation to speak tonight. As Dr. Smith said, tonight, I'm presenting on healthy mind and body, and this is a topic that it will be discussed, and our kids in the district will be educated on it. So as the district's substance abuse provider, one of the things that I do is I do drug education, where I go around to all the schools from K through 12 to educate kids on what it means to have a healthy mind and a healthy body. And if I should say to each and every one of you here tonight, what does it mean to have a healthy mind and body? I'm sure I will get a whole lot of different, I will get a lot of different answers as to what it means to have a healthy mind and a healthy body. When you think about our kids and what happens with them, when things go into their body, how it affects them. So if you look on my screen, you see the nicely designed head. Our kids need to be, it talks about emotional, mentally, physically, socially, and psychologically. If drugs and alcohol enter our kids' bodies, then all of this here that we talked about, then striving in school, drugs and alcohol will affect their body. So as we are looking at that, when I ask the question, when I think about healthy mind and body, what comes to your mind? So some of the things that comes to mind as our kids discuss, regular physical exercise, balanced nutrition, social connection. If our kids are not connected socially, we know that their downfall, they will turn to negativity. The next thing on my screen is healthy mind and body continues. Some of our scholars reside in a neighborhood that is not conducive to their health, and as a result, they turn to different outlets to engage. When we said different outlets, the peer groups. So when they're connected with negativity, they end up doing drugs and alcohol. Last year, I presented on some of the findings of vaping equipments and what is inside on the vaping. So today, as we talking about healthy mind and body, we are gonna go through some of the things that our kids are putting in our body, which affects them. So when we think about healthy mind and body, we go back to the physical health. Our kids need some form of activity to keep them healthy and active, motivation. We need to engage our kids and motivate them to live a healthy life. So I'm gonna move on. So we're gonna look at vape, and I'm gonna ask the question, why do you think our kids engage in mostly vaping activities? So our kids engage in vaping activities based on the flavors. So when I do my drug counseling and ask the kids, well, why do you smoke? Why aren't you engaging in vaping and other drugs? The first thing that they talk about is, my friends are doing it. The flavor is good, the social influences, and the nicotine. So those are some of the reasons that our kids present with. So when we look at stress and anxiety, stress and anxiety for our kids are some of the biggest reason that they use drugs and alcohol, or they vape. Emotional pain, our kids are going through a whole lot of different issues resulting in emotional pains. Social connection, if our kids are not connected socially with a positive environment, then we know that they are going to engage in substance uses. Boredom and lack of purpose, triggers for substance use. So, you know, in the world, we talk about some of the triggers that excite people to use, which are people, places, and things. And when our kids engage, are not engaged in activities, then they fall prey to some of those triggers. So when we look at e-cigarette, 5.9%, and it's not just Mount Vernon City School District, there is a wide issue going on with drugs and alcohol within the nation. So when you look up there, those are some of the flavors, lemon, cherry, and those are the equipments that they use. So peer relationship and substance use, we know that those are connected. So when our kids are engaged in negativity, they connect with peers who are like-minded. So I'm showing on the screen, last year, I gave some of the equipments that our scholars are using. are using to vape. So those are some of the new equipments that are now on the market. So I'm bringing this out so our parents can be educated. So I'm going to show you, those are video games. They mimic a video game. If you look on the right, on the left, the watch on the left is an e-cigarette watch. Now look at the smartwatch in the middle. Will you be able to tell the difference if our kids were wearing that kind of watch? Now look at the e-cigarette Nintendo game. Doesn't it mimic the Nintendo game that our kids use? Now would you be able to say to your kids, you know, you see your kids playing with these video games? Will you be able to say, that is not a Nintendo game, and that is an e-cigarette? So here is a student, and this is not our school, who is sitting inside a classroom and vaping. Would you be able to spotlight that? Can you see where the vaping equipment is? Can you see it? Doesn't it look like a pen in his hand? If you look right in his hand, that is a vaping equipment he has pulling towards his mouth. So when we talk about healthy minds and bodies and the kids are sent to school, and that's one of the reasons why I educate not only students, I educate teachers, security guards, so they can spot some of the devices that are brought into the school. Now, most of you, most of us use a water bottle to drink from. Does that look like a vaping equipment, or does it look like a water bottle? So if you were to see, if you're in a classroom, this is the new vaping equipment that is now on the market. So as I'm showing this, I do have training set up with the security guards so that they can be trained on what to spot when the kids come into school. So as we are talking about healthy mind and bodies, and our kids are coming in, and we thinking that they're drinking water and not juice, you know, it comes in the form of apple, apple juice, mint, peach, and we are thinking that those are all juice devices. Here's another video game, and those are all vaping devices. So on it, it says, "Parents FYI, video game pens are being manufactured for our children." So as we talk about healthy mind and bodies, and our kids are going out because they're not reading their labels to see what's inside, those are some of the refreshing ingredients that is inside the vaping equipments. You have banana, you have cherry, you have strawberries. Now how many of you can spotlight the vaping equipments up here? Does the green one look like a flashlight to you? Right? How many of you say it's a flashlight? Now how many of you say the little vape on the side, the little equipment on the side is one of those vaporizers? These are both vaping equipments. The flashlight is a vaping equipment. So now I want to turn your attention.
[Inaudible]
All we are going to use to educate.
It's incredible to even think about scary at times, thinking kids as young as 12 are out there experimenting with drugs and with alcohol.
Yeah, but according to one Phoenix mom, that is the reality. And tonight she shares her story with our Navida Forgani and why she's hoping parents talk to their kids.
I had no idea at 13 that he was smoking pot.
But that's how young this valley mom's son was when he started to experiment. She asked us to conceal her identity to help protect her son's privacy.
Marijuana was his drug of choice, is his drug of choice, and when he can't get that, he would resort to alcohol.
Now at the age of 16, his addiction has landed him with a nine-month prison sentence. Experts warn the new gateway drug is prescription pills because they're so easy for kids to get their hands on.
The painkillers are problematic, and then we're seeing a lot of progression from painkillers of OxyContin into heroin.
Stats show, on average, kids start drinking and doing drugs as young as 12, and more than half claim they've tried alcohol at some point in their lifetime. That's why it's so important to talk to your kids when they're young.
Prevention nowadays is going to have to start in elementary school. People used to always think, oh, by middle school, we should start talking to our kids about drugs. Many research, a lot of experts will say, if you want to start talking to your kids about drugs at the age of five.
While talking might work for some, this mom is hoping the reality of hard time will scare her son away from drugs and alcohol for good.
It's a big deal. He sees that now. Hopefully, when he gets out, he still remembers that.
Navida Forgani, ABC 15 News.
And we've said so many times, it's about talking to your kids about this. Of course, education is the key.
Okay, so that was just a video talking about kids as young as 12 who are vaping and drinking. So when we talk about healthy minds and bodies, we look, I look at some of the preventive strategies, the coping strategies, stress management skills, emotional regulation, building a positive support, engaging in healthy activities. So some of the ways that I do, as I stated before, how I educate kids on healthy mind and bodies, is I go around to all the schools to educate students. So here I am at Pennington, we are engaging in healthy mind and body activities. This is an activity we did at Mount Vernon High School for night days, where the kids gathered in the cafeteria to learn about different activities going on within the school building. So we are building character, we are building community, we are building excellence. So if you look at that, it's our kids in the high school. So one of the things I do when I do present on healthy mind and bodies and drug education is that I turnkey it, and I have the students in the ninth through 12th grade do a research on the drug that they would like to learn more about. And here is one of our students in the high school who was presenting on drugs and alcohol and how it affect the body. So she also learned some of what was taught to her and gave it back to her peers. So this is on our academy when I went to do another... So these are the pictures. So here we are at Benjamin Turner, we are doing healthy mind and body, talking about drugs and alcohol, and what does it mean to live a life that is healthy? Where it's not just food you put in your body, when they put drugs and alcohol in the body, how it impacts and affect them. So throughout here is just regular pictures, just depicting of events that goes on in the community to engage our kids in activity that talks about healthy mind and body. So in conclusion, you know, when I was growing up, I always hear the phrase, "It takes a village." So this is our village. This is the village that the kids look to. So, you know, it takes everyone to be able to say, in order to live a healthy life, we need to, you need to engage in activities. So one teaches one. So remember, a healthy mind can lead to a healthier life, and it's our duty to ensure that every scholar has the opportunity to reach their full potential. Thank you so much for having me.
[Applause].
Excuse me, we have some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Yes, I'd like to ask a question. The presentation that you gave, will it be available, the PowerPoint be available so that parents can look at it as a reference, and also that the trustees can have it as a reference?
Yes.
For what you utilize? Thank you.
Yes, I did. I emailed that to, Dr. Smith has the presentation. So I know prior to, a couple of years ago, I presented at some of the PTA meetings to parents, but by invitation. So if they invite me to go and present to them, then definitely I'll be available to do that.
Dr. Smith, if it could be uploaded to Board Docs and attached to that particular report? Thank you.
Thank you for this. I'm just wondering, is the district tracking, or are you aware of any changes in utilization or increase in utilization among our student population? I know that recently a couple of cannabis shops have opened up in the city, and I know in my neighborhood, I have seen gummy bear packaging, cannabis gummy bear. I went to their website, and you can get blueberry lemonade gummy bears, you can get sour watermelon gummy bears, creamsicle gummy bears, and these are five bucks a pop. So I'm just curious, even anecdotally, if you know, or should we expect to see a rise among our student population?
So I would say there is a decrease. There was a time when, when I first started here in 2016, we had a lot of students who were smoking marijuana. But that is decreased because as new products comes on the market, you know, our kids move towards things that are different. So there is a tracking system about the kids who are caught with drugs and alcohol, not alcohol so much, but mostly with marijuana, vaping devices, so that is being tracked. And you are so correct, there are so many new vaping shops coming out now, or edibles. And all our kids need is to go to the store and purchase, if you don't have, if they don't have a credit card, they could just buy one of those little $10 cards and just use it to purchase their equipment, so it's not tracked, so you don't know who is purchasing these stuff. And the gummy bears, one of the thing with that, I presented on that last year for the edibles. When our kids do eat the gummy bears, it affects them a lot more than when they're smoking.
Another question. Do we do any type of anonymous surveys with the students when you're working with them in the schools, so that we could quantify that data?
I do. Not, I wouldn't say, I would say I've done it twice when I presented in the classroom, but district-wide, no, I have not done that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Smith. I'm not sure if that's something that we would be able to do.
So one of the things that I just want to make you aware of, I am the only district-wide substance abuse provider. So while I do educate kids, I go around and I also do counseling. So I move from one school to the next depending on the needs of the students of the building. So my main focus right now is all the high schools. I am in all the high schools at least once or twice a week, and then I go around to the rest of schools and to provide drug education.
So I would just say, Dr. Smith, if the data speaks to students starting at the age of 12, I'm just wondering if in a district, we could do some type of anonymous survey, even if the teachers in the classroom are health classes, we could present it in health classes to get that kind of data, and that would inform where the, I guess, the most need is in terms of where, since we only have one person in the district that's doing this, and that person would be able to concentrate and focus on those areas where we identify the most and highest need.
So I would say the highest needs right now are the high schools. While we do have other schools within the district that the kids as young, from the, you know, I don't want to put any schools out there, but from K through 12, you do have students who are vaping.
And my rationale really is to be proactive in terms of educating students and parents in terms of what's going on. So thank you very much, I appreciate the presentation.
One second, I have another question. Do you ever partner with Westchester Recreation or Youth Bureau? They have a workshop they do in plain sight. Have you ever heard of that?
Yes, I have.
Have we ever done that in our district?
It has been done, I believe, once at Mount Vernon High School, and I think once at STEAM Academy.
Do you feel that that would be something we could incorporate into some of our education for parents and students?
Yes, most definitely.
And could we, you talk about doing this in high school, educating the students, could we form a corpse of young people who could kind of do it as some type of extracurricular activity of educating the younger students?
So one of the things that, when we look at that, our kids, they don't, you know, they do a lot of PowerPoint presentation, but just for their classroom. They're, some of them are very shy when it comes on to presenting to the younger grades, but then it also becomes another issue. So now, who will be able to guide or oversee them as they move from one school to the next?
It's more of identifying students who would be interested in some program like that.
Okay, that's something that we probably can look into, Dr. Smith.
And trustee Kelly, I do remember we used to have peer-to-peer, where they used to go into the classrooms and do drug education back in the day, I don't want to date myself. But in addition to that, do we also have referral services of the students that have been identified, as well as support systems for their parents? And are we using some of the school-based health centers within the schools in order to address some of those conditions and services?
Yes, there is definitely a referral process with all the counselors and the principal, they were emailed to the principals and to the counselors. So referral does come in through me, and I keep track of all the referrals that I receive. And the peer-to-peer, at Mount Vernon High School, we do have peer-to-peer drug education. So the kids, they do look, they do research a drug, and then they present it back to their peers on the findings and how it impacts them. So, you know, I can only start with one school at a time, so the school that I started with is Mount Vernon High School.
I have a question, actually, really quick. We have signs in every building that says, "None of this paraphernalia is allowed on-site," and it's confiscated and stuff like that. But I think there's value in a study that's, where we cooperate and talk to our security in our buildings, and really get an idea as to how much they're confiscating all the way through to see really how young. We may find it is before 12 years old, and I think that there's some value in seeing what the security guards are confiscating and taking on a regular basis, even though we have the signs posted in the buildings. And that includes gummies, includes vape pens, it includes all of that, because there's plenty of it. It doesn't matter what's, it's not just high school, it's starting much younger, so I find value in getting some sort of data on that.
One of the things that I must say, and that's one of the reasons why I do educate the security guards, so I know at Mount Vernon, at the new Mount Vernon High School, this week there, I will be meeting with the security guards and at STEAM Academy, I also have a date set up. So this way, if they are alert and they know what the new devices are that's coming in, and don't forget, our scholars are very smart. You know, they're very smart. They will bring equipment, they will bring the vaping device, and they will hide it so that you are not able to find it. So I do say, you know, thumbs up to our security guards who are working very hard, trying to capture some of these equipments. So education is definitely the tool. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings of peace to the esteemed board, our superintendent, cabinet members, community members. My name is Brother Arthur Mohammed. I have been employed with the district for the last 15 years. I serve as the Youth Development Specialist and currently am assigned at the Rebecca Turner Academy under the dynamic leadership of Principal Troy Newby, who's in the house. I want to talk to you about My Brothers Keeper, which I serve as the district's liaison to. And for those who are not familiar, click with My Brothers Keeper. It's a program that focuses on closing and eliminating the opportunity gaps faced by young men of color. And President Obama started it in 2014, 2015, as a result of the George Floyd riots. And New York became the first state to accept the challenge, and Mount Vernon was among those districts that received the first round of funding. It was three grants over a five-year period. And so when we applied for the second round, we were denied, not because of any fault of ours, but because we were actually getting our schools out of the sending status, and they wanted to give the money to other schools who they felt that may need it a little bit more. But I just want to share with you, there you go, we take trips to Albany, at least three trips a year. All of our students who have been fellows, we have My Brothers Keeper Fellows Program, and it partners up young men with mentors from the community, and it's intensive. They do stand and deliver training, they do self-development training, and they're partnered with students from all around the district, I mean, pardon me, all around the state. And so they get an opportunity to bond with young men. We do conference calls. As a matter of fact, I have two young men. I have Mr. Demetrius Daniels, who just graduated from the first year of Rebecca Turner Academy this June. He's about to be a correctional officer. He just did all his tests and everything. And I have a gentleman, Mr. Kayvon Palmer, who's going to graduate this January from Rebecca Turner Academy. Rebecca Turner Academy. And whenever I mentor or get involved with young people, I try to keep it going beyond the school, uh, because even sometimes our nineteen, twenty, and beyond, they still need a helping hand. Just to show you some of the things that we've done, click, there you go, Dr. Gaberton has come, uh, with me to some of the conferences in the past. Uh, last year, uh, what was very beautiful, we had the opportunity to advocate for Mount Vernon with the Big Five Conference, and our young people were able to engage Dr. Betty Rosa, who of course is the top person in education, um, they, whenever the fellows get inducted, they, they shake Dr. Aneel Austin's hand, and I mean, literally, there are six, seven, eight hundred people, and it's just a beautiful experience for, uh, our young men. Uh, Mr. Gary Pretlow was able to give our, our last year, uh, fellows, uh, three thousand dollars apiece in scholarship money, and they got their names called in the hall, in the Assembly Hall, which was a phenomenal experience. Um, yeah. We also partner, uh, with our, our friends in government, uh, to give us a helping hand in terms of just resources. In fact, they facilitated, uh, they stopped their deliberations and they acknowledged our, our fellows and read them into the record, so it was phenomenal. This year, uh, we also went to, uh, a My Brothers Keeper Conference, myself and Mr. Torian Kendall, uh, from the district, district, because the alliance, which is the federal wing of My Brothers Keeper from the Obama Foundation, they want Mount Vernon included in the community, uh, actions, because if funding ever drops, if we're ever denied funding, we can't allow the momentum and the movement of My Brothers Keeper to stop because we're not getting in the state funds. And so there may be some interest, interested community persons who would lend their hands, support, if they have venues, if they have money, uh, or whatever, just to, so that we can continue to service our young people, uh, in this way. What we plan to do utilizing the family and community engagement, uh, grant that we have, we want to set up, um, town hall meetings, but for young men in, in the schools this year, utilizing, um, people from the fire department, the police department, the black lawyers, people who have, uh, told me about their interests and helping, and what we want to do, Dr. Smith, is to address the bullying, address the violence. We live in a culture today where there's, it's drill music, trap music, our young people come to school with masks on, they're taking the persona, we are not their influencers. Some of you may remember the book by Jawanza Konjufu, where it talked about what influenced young people's behavior. Right now, they, they, they don't want to listen to the pastors, they don't want to listen to the parents, they're artists, and, and, and their artists are on YouTube, their artists are on Spotify, and the messages of violence that our young people hear is really influencing the social behavior. And so we want to stem the tide by showing them some people that came from this Mount Vernon community, some that may have had hit rock bottom, but bought themselves up from the bootstraps, to let them know that we believe in you, we're going to invest in you, and then of, also there's consequences to violence. And so, uh, we look forward to continuing, uh, My Brothers Keeper. So thank you, Superintendent, for your continued interest and support in the program, and that's where we are right now. Are there any questions that you may have for me?
Brother Mohammed, how many young men are involved in the program at different schools?
Excellent question. So there's two right now, and because the My Brothers Keeper Fellows Program only calls for two people, uh, right now, I'm, I'm stationed and headquartered at Rebecca Turner, so I don't have the flexibility as I once did, where I, I started My Brothers Keeper's program in all of the schools, or at least about eight to ten of them. That's something that we can do going forward because there's a need, but when we roll out these workshops, we're going to do it in each one of the schools. I get calls from principals asking, can I, uh, talk to a group of the young men that may be a little bit more challenged, and it's just difficult for right now because we trying to get Rebecca Turner off the ground, but I look forward to, uh, with the superintendent's permission, of course, uh, just revisiting, uh, my presence in the other schools, so.
Uh, thank you so much, Brother Arthur, you always have, um, been a strong mentor to our young, young men in our community, and I just want to say thank you. Um, Dr. Smith, I would like to know if there's an opportunity for, uh, Brother Arthur to actually turnkey, so that we could replicate some of these programs in some of the schools through either our, um, social work programs, psych, psychologist programs, guidance office through PPS, in order to at least be able to benefit from the work that's being done?
Certainly, there's an opportunity for him to do that, as, more importantly, there's a need. Um, I think that it warms my heart whenever I see assemblies with our young, black, male students in our audience, and we could have that right here within Mount Vernon.
Yeah, one, one other thing that I wanted to share with you, in, in preliminary talks with, um, um, the fire chief, uh, Robert Odingo, um, what we want to do is, we want to make firefighting, uh, an option. So just as we have CTE programs, what we want to do is bring part of the physical tests, the physical agility test, as well as part of the mental test, how to measure, how to tie ropes, and offer it to young people that indicate that they are interested in being a firefighter, so that literally when they graduate, when the next round of testing comes in, they have a head up because they'll be trained on what the test comprises of. So, um, we're going to hopefully, uh, by December, start a collaboration with the, uh, Mount Vernon Fire Department, which is very exciting, because what we want to do is get young people in careers at a very early age, we just don't want them to have jobs, we want them to have careers, and this is what makes me very happy about Demetrius's desire to be a, a, a CO, because he literally can retire, he's, he's eighteen years old, nineteen years old, literally could retire at forty-nine and have a whole life of, of fun ahead of him.
I just wanted to.
I, I wanted to echo, um, your sentiments on that, Brother Arthur. Uh, Dr. Smith, um, Dr. Doggett, I know he's done a great job with the C E, CTE program so far, building them and expanding them in a, in a very short window, and also, uh, Mr. Simmons at the high school and Dr. Pierce, under her leadership. What I would like to, to just offer is that perhaps we could expand our CTE programs to maybe a public safety academy, where we can incorporate not just fire, but, but public safety across the board. We already have EMT services, perhaps fire, police, and, um, just so those students will have that opportunity and be able to be successful when they actually want to apply for those exams in, in civil service, so thank you.
Um, I just wanted to piggyback on something that you said. Um, trustee Curran and I had the, uh, pleasure of meeting with the mayor, as well as the fire chief, Odindo, and we talked about the collaboration in regards to firefighting. Um, one of the things that they did mention was that you have to live in Mount Vernon, so this would be a great pipeline for our students to get involved in that. So we, we talked about it, he basically wasn't able to meet and, and get behind it the way he wanted to, but he assured us that it was, it was coming. Um, trustee Curran had seen something in New Jersey where, where they were doing a colla, collaboration, and we wanted to mim, mimic that here in Mount Vernon.
Nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, first, Brother Mohammed, thank you for everything that you do, because you do a ton, a ton. Uh, the two gentlemen, they're both products of the credit recovery program, are they?
Absolutely. And, and, and depending, depending if, 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 if we have credit recovery, will, will actually depend on if Kayvon graduates in January or June. Um, I know it's tight on, 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 on the budgeting end, but I, I know it's very critical that we have it so that we could move along. As you know, at Rebecca Turner, this is not My Brothers Keeper, but it is My Brothers Keeper. We, we service the overage, undercredited population, and it's a beauty, and, and I'm not doing this for points, but it's a, it's a beauty of what Mr. Troy Newby does, to speak spirit into the heart and souls of our young people, because many of them want to give up. Many of them are over twenty years old, some of them have children, some of them have a record, some of them come to school and look forward, the first thing they do is grab breakfast to eat, and that population needs to constantly be reinforced with positive, um, affirmations and love, and tough love. And so, um, that's the work that we're doing, and I love it so much, it's, it's, it's a labor of love, and it's tough love, because you have some that may be medicated, uh, some that may have dual diagnosis, but if they from Mount Vernon, they ours, and that's our spirit, and I, I'm grateful for the opportunity to be a part of the Rebecca Turner Academy.
Thank you, Brother Mohammed. So it's, it's definitely a vital, the credit recovery program is vital, and it is successful and valuable, yes?
Absolutely.
Mr. Newby, I'm sure he agrees, and thank you, Mr. Newby, because we know your energy and your efforts as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Blessings, y'all.
Brother Mohammed.
I want to thank Maxine Cole Shire, Will Shire, and Brother Mohammed for your presentation, it was very informative, thank you.
We're going to go on to committee reports.
Auditing, trustee Curran.
Yes, there's no report for auditing.
Trustee Curran, budget and finance?
Sure, so the budget and finance, um, committee met on October ninth. Um, during the meeting, we discussed, um, historical information on the budget, which included, um, the actual expenditures from two thousand nineteen to current. We also, um, discussed the revenue versus expenses from two thousand seventeen to, um, current. Um, also, we, we discussed cash flow of, um, the whole district, and we also discussed, um, the building condition survey. I have to say, um, prior to Jose joining, um, the school district, the budget, which we, right now, we are understanding, the committee is, and the superintendent is basically understanding the condition of the budget. Prior to Jose coming on board, we were misinformed, I'm just going to be frank. Um, we were told that the budget is balanced, and at this point, the budget is really, we in, um, really bad, bad condition right now with the budget. So I have to thank Jose for, for transparency, and we will be discussing, um, we have, we hired, um, capital market advisors, and they will be coming on, um, in November, they will be presenting, giving us an analyst, um, expectation report of the budget in November, right? Is that right, Jose? Okay, also, tonight, we, we are voting on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget calendar, which is, um, during the next few months, we will be following the budget calendar as benchmark for everything that we do in the budget. And that's the end of the budget committee report, thank you.
Um, did you want to say something to return? Okay, um, education committee did not meet, because, uh, thank God, Dr. Doggett is okay, he was in a bender, friend of bender, so we will be postponing that meeting. Um, then we go to facilities with Wanda White.
Hasn't happened in a few years, in a while. Um, all schools, all schools in Mount Vernon have met the minimum requirement points from our fire inspection, allowing us to self-correct all issues, the majority of which have already been completed. This is the first time, the first time in many years that we have passed our inspection on the first go-round.
Now, trustee Warren?
Um, so, uh, last week was Custodian Appreciation Day on Wednesday, uh, so as always, salute our custodians, our cleaners, we've been saying it on a regular, but it was nice to, you know, have a day for it and, uh, speak to it. Um, just, there was a bunch of things, we're always, we get great reports from, uh, Mark and, uh, Mike, uh, telling us what, what's getting done in the district, both in-house and out. Um, I won't read through everything, but I, one of the things, Pennington, uh, the replacement of ceiling tiles in the storage room and added a humid, a dehumidifier, where was that at? Was that next to the freezer? So all of those molded tiles are gone? And the mold on the walls is gone?
What?
Oh, what? Hold on a second, I think I'm supposed to ask Dr. Smith that question. Dr. Smith, can you, can you confirm with your cabinet that the mold in Pennington's storage room that I saw just last week is been removed, is clean? Can you confirm, can you let me know?
I'm not going to look at him.
Oh, you're not going to look at him. Mark, can you confirm that?
So all the visual, uh, whatever you want to call it, we don't want to call it mold because it, we don't want to identify something that's not. Most likely, it's not mold, everything that was there has been removed and cleaned. We don't want to say, oh, it's mold, oh, there was mold, no, 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 this, it's no confirmed case of mold at all. But whatever was there, which more looked like mildew than anything else, has been removed, cleaned, and the issue is being addressed by the repair company for the ventilation on the freezer.
I have a question for, um, superintendent. Do you get a building's report? Would this be in the building's report that you receive, things like this, the trustee, um, uh...
Nobody remembers my name.
Warren. No, I was trying to think your last name, Warren. Trustee Warren. Mitchell. Mitchell, Mitchell is referring to?
So I get a, a weekly report in my cabinet meeting.
I get a weekly report in my cabinet meeting. Uh, I have access to the reports and what happens in each building, so I would like to say, yes, that I, I have access to that, and I do meet with my cabinet regularly to find out exactly what's going on.
So when a trustee realizes it's because someone brought it to their attention, and then, how many complaints do you get? Or is it just that it was noticed?
Me personally, I happened to be at Pennington for the book fair, uh, last Thursday, and I was standing in the kitchen area and I could smell...
What you?
Mildew, or mold, or some substance that smelled like basement, so I happened to just take...
So that goes to, if there is that smell, is wetness, right?
Right.
It would be some type of wetness.
Right, which we saw where it was at, I saw where it was at, and I saw, I'd sent pictures to Dr. Smith as well, did I send it to you, Dr. Smith? Okay, I thought I emailed it, but I took pictures of what looks to me like mold or mildew, because it was green.
And, and so I'll ask you this also, did anybody else complain about that? That would be my other question, because you just happened to be there one day. My concern is, the people who run the building, so there's a responsibility?
There is.
Okay, so this is my concern, is that if that is observed by a member of the public or trustee, why wasn't it brought to, was this a new development? What, Dr. Smith?
Well, you know, there is a process in terms of any type of repair, um, and our custodian staff, they're aware of that process. If it's placed there, it'll be addressed. I'm making the assumption that, um, trustee Mitchell brought it to our attention and it was taken care of.
When can we, uh, when can I have a quick walkthrough, somebody could take, can I go hang out for one second, just take a look and see?
Uh, trustee...
Oh, wait, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm changing, facing the wrong direction. Is there, can I come, can I go visit one time and take a look? Is there, can I come, can I go visit one time and take a look?
That is your building, correct?
Yes, it is. Not, not that any, that matters. I can go in, I'm on, I'm on the wellness committee, so I can go.
I think you kind of have a misunderstanding of that.
Our trustees to go through the superintendent when they're visiting.
Oh, no, no, I always go, yeah.
Except if they're going as a parent, then they identify as parent or community member, that's fine. But to officially do these type of things?
Well, that's why I just asked, yes. Even if it's not my building, I'm going to always, I always go
But you're trustee of the district, so
Yes.
You're well in your rights, but we'd like to go through the process of the superintendent. That kind of allows people who work in the district to be efficient in their jobs, right?
Yeah, they have to be ready. The only other thing I
Do you have any idea when you would like to go?
When? I don't know. I'm gonna, tomorrow, I don't know. It's, it's done, right? Yeah, so tomorrow sometime in the morning would be great. The last thing I had was, we got picture perfect in the last meeting. We put them on, have they started addressing the overgrowth in the district? I'm sorry. Have they started addressing the overgrowth in the district that we discussed between Benjamin Turner and Parker and Rebecca Turner and Graham and Mount Vernon High School?
The whole district.
Have they started yet? They've been on for already a week and we have the ability to enlist them to do the work.
Yes.
I'm sorry? They started?
Yes.
Do we have any timeframe when we'll be able to see this work and see the fruits of their labor and our money?
As you're traveling around the district as a trustee, you could feast your eyes on the work that's being done.
Thank you.
Next one is human resources, which is your chair, Wanda White.
Okay, the HR committee, we met last week. And HR now is working with the CSEA, and, which is the local union, and our silver service on different matters to, to make sure that their contract and silver service are all on the same page. We still have some staffing vacancies. Please, if you know of anyone, we need nurses, we need teachers, we need sped teachers, we need math teachers, we need lunch monitors, we need TAs, please. But we're in a better position to, today than we were a year ago. I have to say that. Lisa Farley and Jessica Graves have been going around to different job fairs promoting Mount Vernon, trying to get, and they're bringing applications back to our city. And we also have community, a community career fair on October 17th. It's being sponsored by our TV or career technology department and the Department of Labor. Starts at 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock at Mount Vernon High School. So if you're looking for a part-time job or a full-time job, please go to Mount Vernon High School with your resume and see what happens.
Thank you. IDA, Dr. Chris McDonough?
Thank you. So, yeah, there was an IDA meeting on the 10th of October. It was a long meeting, it was about two hours long. I had the opportunity to ask questions of the, of one of the developers who came before the IDA. I mentioned them, I think the last time the, the IDA met, it was, the developer's name is Q West. Q West is applying for a 30-year payment in lieu of taxes, which is just a large, long tax abatement. They're looking to build a two-tower high rise near the Mount Vernon West train station. It will have 228 rental units for fam, individuals and families with an average income of about 60% of Westchester County's area median income. For context, in 2024, 60% of AMI for a family of four in Westchester County is $93,000, $93,700. And for a single person, it's $65,600. So that's about the average income for people in this proposed building. What we went over was the, it's called an economic impact analysis done by Victoria Stores from Stores Associates. In particular, what I was interested in is how you calculate the anticipated number of students who would enter the school district from these buildings. It gets a little bit technical, but the term uses a multiplier. So for example, if you had 10 units and five students were going to move in, you just divide 5 by 10 and you get .5. That's your multiplier, about a half a student per unit. Right now, the IDA is coming up with a multiplier of about .1536. Our letter from our attorney had a multiplier of about 2, .25, which is, doesn't seem like a lot, but it is actually a very big difference. It means their, their estimate is about 35 students in the building. Our estimate is about 57. Oh, compounded over time and money, that has a very, very large impact. So that's kind of ongoing. I requested additional support from them on exactly how they calculated their, their multiplier. I requested additional information from the developer of Q West regarding assumptions they made about the building, claims, what I would call truth claims that they made in the absence of evidence. So I asked for the evidence to support those truth claims. We'll see if they're able to provide that to us. This, this particular pilot, they gave two proposals. One was if 100% of the residents, 100% of the people in the building are from outside of the city, and the other assumes 70% are from outside of the city. That proposal's kind of a non-starter. It's way too speculative. In that case, they're assuming that 30% of the building would move from within the city. You'd call it migration within the city. But that would mean that they're moving from places that wouldn't be backfilled with other people. That's just a very, very hard claim to make. So I don't think it's something that we should be entertaining, and that's not what was entertained by our lawyer in the letter regarding Q West. Assuming 100% of the people come to the building from outside of the city, right now, that project shows a loss of about 10 cents on the dollar. In other words, for every dollar, the IDA invests in this project as a tax break. We will only recruit, recoup 90 cents. I asked the developer if they would take that deal as capitalist investors. I don't think they would take that deal. So it's odd to me that they're expecting us to take that deal. They will, in exchange for this project, get a $20 million developer fee. That's their profit, which they will get most of it upfront. We briefly discussed another project that's proposed to take, be pretty much right next door with very, very similar terms. This one is larger, 315 units. This project is called 115 South McQuestion. The developer's NPR group, or NRP group, rather. Again, its average income is about 60%. They also will be looking to get a $20 million fee to build this. And it all, this one is a little bit trickier. You know, if you look at it just on an economic basis, the loss is about 20 cents on the dollar. They threw in what you would call community investment sweeteners, which gets a little bit tricky on how you value them. But if you take their word for it, the way they value it, turns it into a potential 18 cents on the dollar gain. Again, if you accept the developer's words and the value of these community benefits. 18 cents on the dollar as a gain is pretty thin across 30 years, which is a lot of speculation. But that's where things are. That project, 115 South McQuestion, is in negotiation with the IDA behind the scenes. At some point, they should come back into the public. We should see the terms of that contract. And the board of the IDA, which I'm not a voting member, they will vote to either approve this pilot or not. I think they will approve it because New York City has already started the process of selling bonds, HFA bonds, which is a whole other story, but
You said New York City?
New York State. Yeah. Most of the financing for both of these projects are public debt. It's financed through low-income housing tax credits at the federal level, the state level, and some flex funding through Westchester County. Very little equity is put in, put in from, from the owners. It's all financed with, with public debt.
I have, okay. No, because I've had an opportunity.
I just have a quick question. When are we, as the district, will have voting rights? I know that was discussed.
Yes.
Anytime soon?
That's a good, that's a good question. The legislation has passed both houses in the state. It's waiting for Governor Hochul to sign that. If she signs it, then I think I will become a voting member and there will be a union representative as a voting member as well on, on the, on the IDA board.
Couple of questions. Number one, right now, since we don't have voting rights, what type of conversations could we possibly have with IDEA to let them know the implications that these pilots and these buildings would have on our school district?
Great question. I proposed to the IDA, let me just say, the community can go and watch the meetings. They're on the city's YouTube website. This particular meeting is mislabeled. If so, it says city council meeting, but it's not. It's the IDA meeting. You can hear my questioning, it starts about minute 55 into the meeting. One of the things I asked the mayor, who chairs the IDA, is if it would be possible when a housing developer comes to the IDA looking for a tax break, a large tax break, which of course, most of the money foregone is from the school district, if they would, the idea would require that they come and present their project before the school board trustees. The, the, Madam Mayor said that they would take it under consideration. She didn't get it, give an answer at the time, but she said that they would, they would consider that. Other than that, it's really what I do. I question them at the meeting. I request documents and backup and any letters sent on our behalf from the, from our school district attorneys.
My second question is, are they willing to donate half of their, their return on investment to the school district?
That would be great. Yeah, I'll tell you, there is another proposal floating around the state that IDAs, if it went through, it would say IDAs don't have the right to give away school district taxes. IDA maybe could give away the city's proportion of the taxes, but not the school districts. I don't know that that'll fly. Developers have a lot of power in, in the state. I don't think that they would be willing to do it. I think they would claim poverty. They would claim that the, the project would not go forward if they don't get to, what they call it is a, they're looking at a reasonable return on the investment to their shareholders. I said to them, I'm not really concerned about the shareholders. I'm concerned about the city's stakeholders, which are the family and the children in the school district.
I guess we'll just continue to monitor what's going on over there. Thank you, Chris, for your report.
I spoke to trustee McDonough earlier about, I did have the opportunity to watch the IDA meeting at 55, and he did an awesome job in terms of his questioning and, and really put the spotlight on, you know, how we do business in terms of not fully understanding a process and questioning, challenging the process. And I just want to say thank you to you for the job that you did in terms of representing all our scholars and our district. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's important.
Thank you, Chris. We have next, insurance with trustee Kirwin, nothing? Okay. And special education with Dr. Chris McDonough?
Yeah, it was a busy day on the 10th. Same, later that day, we had a meeting and Special Ed Committee met. Trustee White and I met with the Director of Pupil Personnel, Ms. Bromley McKinney, and, and Dr. Ramsey, who's the Director of Student Support Services, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Compliance. They reported to us slow and steady progress in getting what are called Medicaid waivers for related service prescriptions from parents. This is important because, and I don't know how, how long ago was it the law changed? These are considered health-related educational services, which means we can potentially defray some of the costs of providing the services by recouping, recouping money through Medicaid. In order to do that, we need to get these prescriptions and the Medicaid waivers in place. So the parents have been sending that back, so that's moving forward, which is really good. Special education compliance monitoring is ongoing. We've submitted information to the monitor, Julie Elliott. She is still reviewing that. Some ongoing training that's going on about understanding the IEP. It's the Individual Education Program or Plan. PLEPS, these are present levels of education performance. The process of the CPSE, which is the Committee on Preschool Special Education, and the process of the CSE, which is the Committee on Special Education. One, of course, deals with preschoolers, the other, school-aged kids. Surveys have been sent out to teaching assistants on training and our climate and culture in the schools, what type of professional development they'd like. Same, similar survey went to PPS staff involving PBIS, which is, stands for Positive Behavior Interventions in Support, and MTSS, which is the Multi-Tier System of Support. So training is ongoing for those individuals. There's a virtual training tomorrow night, I believe it's for parents, for vocabulary for preschool through sixth grade students. And there will be a toilet training program in November, which is of course, very important. Toilet training's, got to get toilet trained. It was reported there's an uptick in referrals, preschool, special education referrals. This is important, the, the COVID babies are hitting our preschool, and there is an increase in evaluations and then an increase in referrals, students who qualify for services. A very large increase, which is probably going to impact our preschool special, I'm sorry, our kindergarten special education enrollment next year. It, it could, it could mean that we need additional classrooms and certainly additional staff. Regarding staffing, we are still working to fill special education vacancies in related service, speech, school psychology. We're using BOSI's contracted services and long-term subs to fill these gaps. I think it's important to note that the shortages are not for want of trying. Everybody who is trying to fill those, there is just a national shortage that all school districts are dealing with. This impacts me as well and, and the work that I do in special education. And I've just, we are trying to fill them. We know it's difficult. And I think that's it.
One question. How is the delivery of services to the present students with IEPs? Has that improved?
It has improved, although it's not at 100%. Dr. Smith, I'm not entirely sure what the percentage is now. It might be somewhere around 90%, I think. So there's still some kid, there's still some gaps that we're trying to fill. I think it's largely these related service kids and some of the compensatory services. But we're, we're making gains.
I'm sorry, quick question. When do you think we can see some sort of schematic and, on data that shows truly where we are as far as meeting the, our mandated services for our children in the district?
We're going to have Ms. McKitty Bromley present, and she'll be able to present on the data. We are working towards providing our services because of the shortage. We're having some difficulties, but we are still required to do compensatory services.
Yeah, I'm talking especially that across the board, ensuring that, you know, especially when we have teachers, we're, we're missing teachers for some of our special education students. They're missing out on instructional time. You know, I just want to know that we're, we have to have data that says, hey, this is the percentage of students who are truly not getting their services regardless of the reasons why, and how we're closing that gap. Can we have something?
We'll have them report on it, yes.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give a shout out to the Mount Vernon Leadership Academy. Principal Crawford took me around last week. I got to meet staff and I got to go into a bunch of classrooms, and I really enjoyed it, and I just wanted to say thank you to them.
Next is technology, trustee Dr. Donna Amarable.
First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to the trustees for wearing your pink today to recognize, let people make, make people aware of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So I'd just like to say thank you for that. We know that everyone in our community has been impacted by cancer in one way or another and more, especially for women. So, and it, and breast cancer does not just affect women, it also affects men. So thank you for that. In terms of technology committee, we did not meet. However, there is an item that I would like to raise. During our last technology committee, we did discuss some efficiency models that we would implement. And I just wanted to know what the status was, Dr. Smith. Perhaps if you could direct the question to one of your cabinet Perhaps if you could direct the question to one of your cabinet, cabinet members that could answer the question. We had talked about using one of our district employees to help supervise some of the, the tech leads, especially ones that are, that are here through our BOSI's program. So I wanted to know whether or not that idea has been implemented, and if not, when can we expect that to occur? So that we can have efficiency and make sure that our schools are supported on every level in terms of technology.
So I will turn it over to Jamal Doggett, but I do want to say, we've had many conversations in terms of, of just what you're talking about, having someone internally work with the tech links. And it's my understanding that's been put in place. Did you want to say anything?
Yes, um, we, I met with Carlos and we met with the individual. We put something in place. We were waiting for a, a clear description of what that role looks like to give to that individual, and I believe that did happen. So I will follow up with Carlos to make sure that did happen, so we can make sure that this is in place.
Thank you.
And the last report is from the wellness committee, and that is trustee Warren Mitchell the second.
Thank you. Wellness committee hasn't met in some time. Dr. Smith, I'm not certain when we were supposed to meet again. Can that cabinet member be asked a question?
Certainly.
That would be Dr. Doggett for the wellness committee.
No, 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 wait. Is it? Cause this, no, that, not the same one that Lauren is on. She's a, I'm sorry, the trustee current one is on, that's different. That's the one with the Zumba class that I don't go to. The wellness committee is regarding school lunch, how the kids are being fed, things like that.
I beg your pardon. The, I thought the wellness committee was a part of, of the, the, the fitness, fitness committee, no?
It was different. Yeah, it was always, it was, it's been different. A, a long, a while back, it was the same.
Yeah.
When I came back on, it was like, no, that's, it's two different things now.
It's two different things.
I think it kept that way, but if it's,
So, I have to check and see who that was assigned to, cause I don't know off the top of my head, and you know, they're not going to volunteer that information right now.
All right. So what we do, and just so I'm clear. Never mind.
I will let you know.
Loaded question.
I would let you know who is the cabinet member.
I need to, yeah, I just need to know who's the cabinet member that's gonna, that's in charge over food services and all and,
Is it the wellness committee or is it food services?
Well, wellness, food services falls underneath wellness. So I'm the one that's chasing for menus and making sure we're feeding the kids. What are we getting? When's my taste test? Can I ask you that?
So, let me just say this. In turn, who's in charge of food services is Assistant Superintendent of Business Jose Famoso, and he's in charge of food services.
Let me write that down.
So, if I had to select someone to be in charge of that committee, it would be him.
Oh, okay.
You see him?
Right, okay. All right, understood. That's, now I know who I'm supposed to be talking to about the menus and food services.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And that concludes our committee reports. On to, we're gonna go on to follow up on any old business? Okay, I have questions from Tuesday, October 1st, 2024 board meeting. There was a question, is there backlog with registration? It says, we have a tremendous influx of students being registered at the beginning of the school year. Although Mount Vernon City School District has transitioned to online registration, many families submitted paper applications. The processing of paper applications is very time-consuming. To this end, the paper application option was removed from the website. Subsequently, the backlog of registration has been resolved. We are up to date with our registration. The next thing is, what is the charter school status? This was answered on October 1st, 2024, meeting under old business. And that concludes our old business. Was, was there any more? I don't know if anybody else. Did anybody else have any old business they would like to address? Or question what was said?
What was the last answer you just gave for?
This was answered on October 1st, 2024, meeting under old business. Are you, are you challenging that?
I'm just wondering where the answer was.
It is, that it was addressed already, is what I was told.
It was addressed. Basically, it was not approved.
Thank you.
Okay, just to refresh the memory.
Just for point of clarification, trustee Kelly, when you ask for old business, does that mean just the old business from the public or old business that maybe some of the trustees may have about?
You can, you can also discuss old business.
Thank you, thank you. I would like to know what the process is for the board voting on leaves of absences in the district, Dr. Smith?
Am I supposed to respond next meeting or this meeting?
As a trustee, when she asks, this is our meeting for the community, so could you please respond to the trustee's question?
Certainly. So basically, how do I want to answer that? I said, how do I want to answer that question?
Truthfully.
I meant truthfully. It is, it has come to our attention that with FMLA, the board should approve FMLA for those individuals that may not have enough sick days or coverage. So, for example, if I am an employee and I put, I have FMLA for three months and I only have two weeks of time left, that has to be voted on the board. It's when they run out of time. But I think as a committee or as a board, we've moved towards all FMLA being approved. But it's not required. What is required is if in fact, someone may not have enough time or doesn't have any time or have some of the time, that's what's supposed to be voted on by the board.
Okay, so I guess my question is, at some point, may we have a, the information on the regs for that?
Certainly. That message was conveyed to us by our outside attorney. I followed up with him and he confirmed that. So we've had some dialogue about the FMLA. I will ask him to address that. He, he's not present today, but he could, presented in executive session.
Okay, I'll defer to executive session, cause that's not my recollection, but thank you.
Oh, yeah. So should that be a policy that we also adopt for that?
It's probably, it's already established. What we have to do is put it in practice.
Also, is it, another question, is it? I guess I can wait until, it's not old business, cause we didn't get there yet. That's it, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our resolutions. May I have a motion for 5.1? Authorization to appoint Ja'Juan O'Brien as the school district treasurer.
I'd like to request to pull this resolution pending discussion in executive session.
Can I have a motion to pull 5.1 for discussion in executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries to pull 5.1 for discussion in executive session. Can I have a motion for 5.2? Human Resources 113A, certified?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 5.3? Human Resources 113B, classified? Motion.
Second.
Question?
Questions, concerns, discussions, please?
May I have clarification on the process for civil service for making individuals probationary, provisional, probationary to permanent?
So the law changed, it was sent to all of you this afternoon. So in, in the memo, it came from October 2023. Basically, it basically, it indicates that if you served in a provisional position, that time counts if you appointed a position and made probationary. So if you did, already did six months and, and you come, and you're appointed a job, you would be permanent in that position.
Does that count for everyone? Cause it's my understanding that there may be one that was listed as out of title?
If my memory serves me correctly, the person, that was also answered, and the person that was listed out of title was also, yeah, he was on six months probation. So that was also responded.
So was it corrected? Because it, it had to have come out late this afternoon, because I missed it.
Yes, it did.
Okay.
All the questions were answered.
I didn't see all of my questions answered, that's why I'm asking them now. I saw two questions answered, but I did not see my questions answered. I saw trustee Mitchell's questions answered.
Your questions were answered as well.
So I, I just want to take this opportunity to say that that's why we try to have this approved and out by the weekend. It's very difficult for trustees to follow emails late in the day when we're required to vote. So, not to penalize anybody, but we've asked that resolutions be put in full for us to approve by Thursday. And I think that this would kind of stem some of these issues we keep having, having, questioning. We don't want to question things. We'd rather have some of the information or all of the information beforehand that kind of doesn't jeopardize any type of resolutions that are before the whole board.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Motion fail. You have a question? And trustee McDonald, did you abstain also? Trustee? Trustee Mitchell, you abstained?
I abstained, yes.
May I just add a comment? That I'm looking at the emails and I'm still looking at the questions I submitted, and they have not been answered. Therefore, that's why I abstained.
Excuse me, Rita, you sent those out, correct? I remember seeing them. They did come out.
I'm looking at an email at 4:12 PM that does not address my questions. Thank you.
How, how are we gonna move forward with this? How are we moving forward?
So, has the vote been recorded?
Yes, vote is recorded, motion fails.
Can we go into executive session for this?
We have to continue. We, yeah. We have to continue.
Okay.
So, is this, I would ask that you would pull it then and we could discuss it.
It already.
Okay. Moving forward.
Can I have a motion for 6.1? Authorization to hire staff for the Mount Vernon Special Olympics Pioneer Games?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.2? Authorization to hire the Mount Vernon City School District Mentor Program for new teachers? Motion. Second. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can we just have a, a simple understanding as to what this, what the mentoring program does for our new teachers? And then, do we have the same thing for principals?
So the mentoring program was established through the union a few years back. The union advocated so that new teachers come in, we'll have someone to help them become acclimated as a new teacher within the district. In regards to mentorship for principals, that was established last year. That has not been brought to the table for this year, but there was mentoring for the principals last year.
Do we have any way to measure the success of this mentoring? Like, in other words, do we, do we bring our new teachers back and have like some sort of quick Q and A to say, hey, how was your mentoring? What did you, what did you get from it? Do we have any of that? Do we do that? Even with the principals as well?
We have a mid-year and end-year evaluation as part of the mentorship program. All that information is confidential, and if you see the administrator for the program takes the info. Okay, thank you. We have a mid-year and end-year evaluation of the program, and we have our, our coordinator and our administrator for the program that summarizes that information and gives it to us. So at the end of the year, it's cause the information is confidential, but once they meet and gather in order to approve the program, they affect it, but they let us know the pros and cons of the program and areas of recommendation.
So, did we receive that? I did, I do remember reading something really quickly about some of the comments that were made, and I think they wanted more formalized, they were, wanted to observe?
Yes. Years back, and I remember when they were doing this, when I was principal, the mentors had days where substitutes covered the mentors, so they're able to go to the buildings and do observations and evaluations and give feedback. But due to the lack of subs and the shortage, it's very difficult to do that. So that was pretty much one of the recommendations and negative feedback that was given.
My last question is, how we, how are these mentors chosen? Like, was it like a, how, how was it, how are they chosen?
First or second year teacher, new teacher. Or the mentor teachers?
Yeah, in other words, the teacher doing the mentoring, how is that, how are they chosen? Is that something that comes from the building lead? They just choose their friends? How does it work?
I believe there's a recommendation process that they have to fill out by their principal or another teacher as well to fill out.
Trustee Mitchell, may I address trustee Mitchell? As a former principal, I would like to say that the mentoring program is a very worthwhile program for new teachers. It helps to support them, to make sure that they are successful and leads them towards on the tenure track to make sure they are successful and so that they also have a, a person that they can basically speak to and vet to, so that they don't have to necessarily share everything with their principal and ask questions. They have a person, a target one-on-one person that they can identify. It's also a very worthwhile pr, um, program for principals. So having also served as a mentor teacher and a mentor administrator, I just want to say it's an extremely worthwhile program.
Trustee Mitchell, if you also look to the resolution, we attached the actual mentoring program handbook where you can see the actual forms in the appendices section.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.3? Approval to update the KDA 8 MTSS district team?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.4? Authorization to replace a No Place For Hate team member at Denzel Washington School of the Arts?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.1? Approval of pupil personnel services memorandum number seven dated October 15th, 2023? Personnel Services Memorandum Number 7, dated October 15, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.2, Appointment of an Impartial Hearing Officer, Case Number 641950?
Motion.
Who's second? Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.1, Authorization to Adopt the Budget Calendar for the 2025-26 Year?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.1, Authorization to Approve a Settlement Agreement with Employee Number 171?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.1, Motion to Enter Into Executive Session for the Purpose of Discussing Pending Litigation, the Financial History of a Particular Person or Corporation, or Matters Leading to the Appointment, Employment, Demotion, Discipline, Suspension, Dismissal, or Removal of a Particular Person or Corporation, and to Receive Legal Advice on a Pending Matter?
Oh, excuse me. We will be coming back.
Everyone in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. All right, motion carries. We are in executive session.